I called the order at this time, would you rise and pledge allegiance to the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Statement of compliance with Freedom of Information Act of all notice and... About this meeting, the time date has been posted, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you ma'am. And at this time, the chair will entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes?
No.
Agenda.
Oh, approval of the agenda. So moved, Jeff. Okay, Mr. Passamit and Mr. Tabanak. Any question, discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand?
Aye.
Okay, aye, that's good. Then we have the approval of the minutes of April the 8th, 2025. Chair will entertain a motion. Somebody second it, okay, Joe, somebody second. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you ma'am. Okay. Any questions? Can we approve this without objection? Are there any objection?
No.
Saying done, okay, the motion passes. We down to citizens' comment. And it's... I have Teresa White.
Yes, Teresa White.
Yes, Teresa White, yes. You first on the public comment.
Come on down.
Let me move this back some.
Hello, my name is Teresa White, I'm the founder and chief executive officer of the Pine-African-Gianni Island Preservation Network, which is celebrating 10 years of the Help Save Kalahitiki Land Campaign this year, and saving about $25 million worth of property on our Kalahitiki people in Georgia and South Carolina. In reference to Pine Island's bound-on application, I see it as an extraordinary circumstance and it's unheard of for any developer to ask for less development and he or she being entitled to it by rights. I think that's an important development for the community. It addresses a lot of the concerns that have been expressed about conservation, traffic, and infrastructure. As I say previously on several occasions, the Pine Island development does not encroach on any land owned by Kalahitiki people, but only the only person who actually has property that touches it is in favor of it. It doesn't want access to any graveyards where Black people have been buried. And it's not going to raise property taxes across the island as some people have stated. What I would like to see added to the plan is to have either the Coastal Community Foundation or the Anon Way oversee the distribution of the estimated $2 to $3 million that Mr. Tropiono had agreed to set aside for the St. Helens Island community if this proposal is approved by council. As is presently written, I believe that it falls short in the area of addressing two important issues for the old people. That's the boarding, the loss of land, the ongoing tax sales, and heirs' property. I think that at least $1 million of the money that he's proposing in this development agreement should be set aside to assist with heirs' property title clearance to a cemetery heirs' property preservation and whichever organization its council decides to be assigned to help with the property tax payment assistance. I think it's a good plan that deserves serious consideration. And as I've said previously, the CPO is a good thing. It did what it intended to do with stock development in a way that would cause people to lose their property from the developmental resorts, but it's a double-edged sword because it caused people to have to sell their property because they couldn't afford to pay the taxes. The taxes continued to rise and there was nothing they could do with their property. Basically, they decided growing crops and trees on it. So you have a situation where you've got people with property that's valued at over $1 million and only got trees and goats and cows on it. And they can't create any generational wealth that way. So if you can find a way, and I know you can because you've got some smart people working for you, if you can figure out a way to keep the CPO in place and cut Mr. Tropiono's section off because it shouldn't have been included in the CPO in the first place, that would be a good solution for the community. Everybody would get what they want and the community would get some of the help they need that they haven't had for years and people will be able to keep ownership of their property. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jessie White? Right now, Ms. White is the last person on the list to sign up. If there's anyone else who would like to address this committee, please raise your hand after Ms. White is finished. Other than that, we're going to move the agenda.
Thank you, Jessie White with the Coastal Conservation League. I just want to give my full support and excitement for the item number nine and number... Where did it go? The Chelsea, the Chelsea consideration. We're very excited about that, that's an aside. But my comments tonight are for the rezoning in Burton. And we appreciate that the applicant has gone through the right process in utilizing the PTO overlay for bringing this rezoning forward. Our only comment is to encourage you as council members to consider the cumulative impacts of growth in this Burton area. Because as of right now, there's been over 2,000 units that have been either approved or are already under construction between the county and the city of Beaufort in this area along the Robert Smalls Parkway. And as anyone who has driven along that roadway knows, there's a lot of congestion. There's a lot of support that is needed for the infrastructure to support all of that development. And so as you're considering a rezoning, please take that into consideration because this will be adding to an area that's already undergoing really significant growth without the infrastructure in place to really support it and whether or not we have the capacity to do that. If you are going to consider this rezoning, I encourage you to consider more than 10 workforce housing units. I think that is a real need and 10 is probably not enough to address it. But also consider the impacts to the surrounding existing communities and the character of the area where this new development would be going. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public would like to make comments? Yes, sir. Just give us your name.
Robert Adams, Executive Director of the Penn Center. I just want to thank you all for y'all's continued effort to make sure that you're working on behalf of the people. And I also want to give a big shout out to our friends of Fort Fremont who are great neighbors and just great folks. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to move the agenda and we're down to the Assistant County Administrator Report. Mr. Atkinson, yes, sir?
Good afternoon. I would like to introduce our Director of Land Preservation, Ms. Stephanie Najid. She's going to provide an overview of the Pocataligo Preserve Management Plan that was completed about a month ago. And if you're not familiar with this, the former name, or it sits adjacent to Cotton Hall. So, without further ado, I'll turn the microphone over. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. I have a presentation for you, just a few slides. Do I click or do you click? Okay, alright. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Committee.
Good afternoon.
As Chuck mentioned, my name's Stephanie Najid. I'm the Director of the Land Preservation Department, formerly known as Passive Parks Department. Today, I'd like to give you just a brief overview of the Pocataligo Preserve Management Plan. As Mr. Atkinson mentioned, we did rename it since the adjacent property is still known as Cotton Hall and is still operating as a business. So we wanted to not have any confusion there.
I just commented that I...
Yes, sir.
I appreciate the name.
Thank you.
Yes, okay.
Thank you. We thought for a while about it.
It's a good name.
In case... Just to have a little refresher about the property description, it is 527 acres. It was acquired in October 20th, happened to be my birthday, on 2023 for almost $5.5 million. A million of that did come from the South Carolina Conservation Bank. The acquisition purposes did include protection of the natural resources, connectivity and ecological contribution to the Ace Basin as far as water quality and impacts to the water quality in the Ace Basin is concerned, as well as future public access for passive recreations in particular. It is bound by Highway 17 on the west, Cotton Hall Road on the north, and the Tomatley Plantation, which is still known as Cotton Hall on the east and the south sides of the property. For the last year, I've been collecting a lot of data on the property. We've had previously, I did give a presentation on this where I showed you some slides about some water quality aspects as well as some wildlife that we found on the property. We did hire a land management company who is familiar with this area and has worked with a lot of the property owners in the area. It's called Folk Land Management. Travis Folk, the company was created by his father. They have over 40 years of experience in the Yemecii area and know this water basin and watershed very, very well. So they went out to the property and created the stand maps that you see here. There are approximately 10 stands of fallow fields that encompass around 180 acres. They have been previously farmed for various farm products. Currently, they are recovering with native grasses, forbs, and trees. There are also two stands in the northern section, stand eight and 14, that are forested music uplands. They have not been previously clear cut or managed. They've been, they are currently intact on that section, roughly 9700 acres or so. There are also two stands of forested wetlands on the southern section, stands six and seven on that map. They were previously clear cut. They used to be mature hardwood forests, but prior to our ownership, they were clear cut on that southern section. They are very, very wet. And so they are currently recovering with early successional tree species. So a lot of the stumps that are there have respouted. So it is recovering, but for whatever reason, it was clear cut before we purchased it. The impoundments total roughly 140-ish acres. There are four stands, and those are inland field number one, two, three, and four on that map. Two of the inland fields are in the northern section in a skinny rectangular shape. And then the two inland fields that are the bulk of the impoundment is there in the middle of the property. They were previously semi-managed and are currently in an open flow situation, but they do need some improvements. Their, the maintenance and upkeep of the culverts and such are in a bit of disrepair. And so we will talk about that here shortly. This is just another image of some data we collected regarding the LIDAR on the property. So you can see where the high ground is in the red versus the low ground in the blue. And then the blue areas, the darker the blue, the deeper the water. However, based on the contour, the bathymetric mapping that our consultant did, the impoundments are really only about three feet deep. So they're still really relatively shallow. When coming up with the management plan, I kept those three initial goals for the acquisition purposes in mind to try and determine what would be the best habitat restoration and management of the property. So the first areas where the forested music uplands in the north and the forested wetlands in the south, basically, we're going to maintain and enhance those. There is invasive exotic vegetation growing in them, mainly Chinese tallow. So we will do have some targeted removal of Chinese tallow to prevent that from overtaking all of the property. We also want to allow nature to do its thing and allow the clear cut areas to recover and evolve through those natural processes. We may have some supplemental planting. If we have areas where we have a lot of tallow that we have to take out, like if there's a big clump, we can come in there and we can supplement plant with other hardwood species that are similar in the area to just kind of help jumpstart that so it doesn't continue to stay just this little spot of early successional growth. The fallow fields, because they were previously farmed, they are grasslands right now. Some native grasses, some exotic grasses, there's kind of a mix there. But we do want to restore and enhance those fallow fields so that they become longleaf grassland or grassland savanna areas. So depending on the soil type and the elevation, we'll determine whether we replant with longleaf or whether we keep it as a grassland if it ends up being a little bit too wet for the longleaf. We have done an initial prescribed burn event. So that is actually a picture of our naturalist on the fire line during a prescribed fire that we had in April this year. So we will continue to prescribe burn the fields for promoting native grasses and forbs as well as to do site preparation, other techniques for longleaf pine restoration, and then maintain those open grasslands in those areas that are appropriate. The impoundments are definitely where the bulk of the restoration activities, money funding, energy, and time are going to be spent. We want to enhance the existing impoundments by repairing those water control structures and the infrastructure in order to improve the connectivity and flow of water across the property. We also want to enhance, through those actions, it will enhance the habitat for the fish and the avian species that utilize those properties. So the plan itself has a lot of very, very detailed information. I was trying to make this presentation brief, so not to get into too many details, but just to give you an idea of what that infrastructure improvement might look like. Right where those yellow stars are are the areas where we need to replace culvert flapgates and risers in order to have better flow across the property. In addition, the green lines that just popped up... Yeah, you can kind of see that. The green lines that just popped up, we need to repair and stabilize the existing dikes. There's a lot of areas in the dikes where the water has undercut the dike, where it's blown a hole straight through the dike, or where it's just too soft and mushy and it's not going to be suitable for public access either by pedestrian or vehicle. It's barely good enough for us to drive an ATV across in some spots. So we want to make sure that we repair those dikes and make them safe for the public and have the culverts and the dikes fully repaired before inviting the public to the property. And then the last little bit is excavating the circulation canals. The canals, some of them have been sloughed in. The dikes over time with water and erosion start to fill in the canals. There are, on the large impoundments, an interior canal inside the impoundment and then an exterior canal on the outside of the impoundment. And both of those canals are needed in order to have water come in during high tide and then flow out during low tide. So right now, things are flowing. It is flowing out like it's supposed to. We do plan on maintaining that open water flow, but we do want to have better circulation so that the impoundments themselves do not become just algae-filled, shallow, muddy pits. When creating this plan, I made a very specific point to our consultant to tell them we can have zero impact to our neighbors. So our neighbors can do whatever they want on their property. If our neighbors want to hold their water, they can hold their water. If they want to let their water go, they can let their water go. Our property is the conduit for that water. So if they let their water go, we're not impeding the flow of water out of the system. But we do need to maintain circulation. Any questions on that before I move forward?
Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am?
Just my own affirmation, what is a dike?
A dike is a berm. It's where you dredge the edge of the impoundment and you basically pile the dirt on itself so it creates a berm around the impoundment.
And what is the Chinese tallow?
Chinese tallow is an invasive exotic tree. It's a really beautiful tree that you see in the fall. A lot of people planted it for its foliage. It gets really pretty red and orange and yellow. It makes these little popcorn fruits that birds love to eat and spread all over the place.
So they're not good?
No, they're not good. They do take over.
Oh, they take over? So we don't want that?
We do not want that.
And why did the name change?
The name changed because Cotton Hall is still an active business next door to us so we didn't want to confuse.
Is that an Indian name?
It is a Yemecii tribe that was in the area and it is also the name of the river nearby.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Any other question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Are you going to, can this be included or sent to separately?
It'll be as an add-on, we got it today.
Yes, and the full management plan will be on the website, on my, on the land preservation website tomorrow morning. Yeah.
The water flow. I was told that this section here actually controlled the downflow for all the water that comes in upstream.
Yes. So the water coming in from the north where that star is on the top left, that is the water coming from the north under Cotton Hall Road into the property. And so the contours of the property are higher on the north end than on the south end. So the water is flowing south and then it's flowing west underneath 17 out to a structure that we don't have any control over as well as to the creek, once it gets to the creek. So that's why we wanted to keep an open flow scenario.
Did I understand correctly that the impoundments are no more than three feet deep?
Yes, they're very shallow. And so by installing the canals, especially the interior canal, the benefit of that is it gives a thermal refuge for fish in the impoundment. And then because we're going to hopefully have some fishing access points along the berm, it's going to give a really nice place where we'll have some deeper water fishing in easy access and then have that thermal refuge for the fish. Other questions?
Any impact to the cemetery this is?
No, that cemetery is owned by another, a different party on the other side of 17.
But does the water impact it?
No, the water is going into, I don't know if you can see the... Yeah, you can't see the pointer on the thing. The water's going into that little... The water's going into that little triangle on the west of seventeen, and then you see where the creek and the marsh are, that's where the water's flowing out. So, it, the tidal influx is only up to that edge where the marsh, where the marsh and the upland meet. It's okay, I think we're good. Anything else? Okay.
Go ahead.
All right, so moving on to the actual public access planning and development. Once we get to the point where the property is going to be safe for people, then we can start to do the planning, access, and development like I would normally do for all the other park projects. The immediate need obviously is for the water control, structure, repair, and access and safety. We do need a federal permit with this from the Army Corps. So, the Army Corps permit to implement the recommended improvements that are in the plan was submitted to them in October 2024. We do anticipate that they give us feedback and/or potentially approval either this month or next. So, Folk Land Management is still working with the Corps to address responses to them. We would also need a permit from the state, too, and I think Yemecii, because the property's in the town of Yemecii. Public access planning and permitting can begin after these initial repairs are completed. Once those, once the planning and permitting process has begun, it could potentially take two to four years to complete all of the plans and the necessary permits, just because it's such a complicated system and there's a lot to consider. So, we would like to get a master plan completed and then permit in phases as we go. Access improvements are likely to incur in stages, occur in stages over about a five to seven-year period of time until complete. And this is strictly because of funding and time for permitting that I'll get to in just a moment. And something to consider, even though we're doing, even if we, when we open the property up for public access, is management and restoration does not end. That is an in-perpetuity item. We will constantly have to do prescribed burning. We will constantly have to have some kind of impoundment and canal excavation, maintenance. There is always going to be improvements and maintenance needed on this property. So, there may be times when the property is closed to the public because we have to do these actions in order to maintain the property. Now, some cost estimates. And I am definitely prefacing this, that these are pre-tariff estimates and are completely dependent on availability of funding material and labor in order to implement these action items. So, we currently have water control, structure repairs at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That was the initial cost estimate of Folk Land Management for those seven culverts, risers, and flapgates that I mentioned. So, that's, that's the first step, is get those fixed. That is in my current fiscal year '26 department budget that has been going through your process. Then, the next step is the berm stabilization, the dike stabilization, and then the canal excavation. That is estimated to be between seven hundred and fifty to a million dollars. And it just kind of depends, right now, that's the estimate that Folk Land Management has, based off of other projects they're doing in the area, but it really kind of depends on how bad those dikes really are, or how much muck is in those canals and where to dispose of it. A lot of this is disposal costs. Prescribed burning costs around eight thousand dollars per event. Long-leaf pine restoration is gonna probably cost about twenty thousand dollars for site prep and reforestation. Invasive exotic control is about five thousand dollars per event. Public access planning, because it's such a large property and is very complex as far as like access and planning and, and permitting process, it's probably gonna be around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then, you're looking at about a seven to a ten million dollar public access improvement price tag. So, we're, this is a very long-term capital investment. And I just want to remind everybody, it's five hundred and thirty acres. So, there's, there's a lot. So, the timeline, and again, I'm gonna preface this, that this is completely dependent upon funding and permitting approvals. This is my best guess, my swag, if you will. So, fiscal year '25 that we're in now, we've completed the management plan, we completed the initial prescribed burn, so we know how we're operating out there with that. So, lots of lessons learned this past April, and we want to obtain that Army Corps permit, which was submitted, as, as I had mentioned, hopefully getting that soon. Next fiscal year, I want to complete those initial water control repairs and then begin the other land management actions while those water control structures are being completed. So, things like looking at the, doing some site prep for the reforestation, continuing prescribed fire, continuing the exotic control, and then monitoring the vegetation and wildlife and making sure that what we're doing is having the effect that we want, the goal, that is achieving the goal that we have set out. Fiscal year '27, I'm assuming we can begin the canal and the berm improvements and then start the conceptual public access planning. So, I, that's, we can have these two things running concurrently. We can do planning and permitting while we're completing the improvements. And fiscal year '28, complete those improvements. And I say complete them because I have a feeling because of our bid process and our purchasing processes, it's gonna take us probably three to four months in order to get somebody on board and under contract, and then it's potentially gonna take them another few months to get a permit, and then another six to eight months in order to complete. So, we're looking at more of like a year and a half timeline for doing those repairs to the, to the berm and the canals. We'll complete the conceptual plan and then also begin civil planning and then start that permitting process for the public access. And then fiscal year '29, complete the civil plan and permitting, and then hopefully be able to bid out phase one of the public access construction so that by fiscal year '30, we can have a completed phase one public access construction and potentially moving into a phase two or phase three. I understand this is not the timeline a lot of people were hoping for, but I'm, I'm trying to set, I'm trying to manage expectations and be realistic.
You ready?
So.
Okay. Questions?
That's it. Go ahead.
I don't know if my mic's working, but hopefully you can hear me. I, I would hope, and I know you will, there's grants for long-leaf pine reforestation. I hope you'll go for grants for some of these other items, but.
Yes, ma'am.
And by '30, that's a long time.
I am hoping it'll move faster. It's just the permitting process that we have had so far has just been so slow, and now having to add the federal government into that permitting process is, you know, we submitted this permit in October and we are just now attempting to get feedback back. So, it's.
I have another suggestion. I think York and Gerald Austin and I are the only three council members that went out there. Oh, you were there, too, boss?
Yes.
We need another field trip since we can't have a public access maybe soon. It's been over a year, hasn't it?
Yes, we would love to show.
Now that we've done the prescribed burning, and maybe, you know, I, I think if the public and others see it, they get real excited about it.
It's going to be, it's, I'm super excited. I can't, like, I, I hope that that timeline is sped up. That's not what I'm, like, I'm going to keep moving through each step and each process as quickly as I can.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward, I hope to be here in 2030, but I'm looking forward to the grand opening.
Yes, me, too. Thank you.
Okay. And I hope you're still here.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the funding.
We're down to.
Ten million dollars.
Presentation number eight, the annual report for Fort Fremont and Mr. Forsyte.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Members of the council, I'm Barney Forsyte. I'm the president of the Friends of Fort Fremont. I'd like to give a shout-out to my colleagues who are here, they're folks in the red shirt, and I want to particularly acknowledge Wendy Wilson, who was the past president of the Friends of Fort Fremont and is one of the founders of this organization, and Pat Scully, who's the vice president and will take over from me next year as the president of the Friends, so, and then all my colleagues here. So, thank you. We're required on an annual basis to present an annual report to the, to the county council, and so I would like to briefly summarize that report for the year 2024. As you know, the, I think you need to put it on.
He just takes a minute.
Ah, there we go. This is the mission of the Friends of Fort Fremont, to preserve and promote the fort. It is a treasure here on the shores of Port Royal Sound, and as you can see, we try to anchor the story of Fort Fremont in the larger story of the history of, of the Port Royal Sound area. We currently have eighty members who are active members of the Friends of Fort Fremont going forward. And this is a great partnership between this organization, the Friends of Fort Fremont, which is a 501(c)(3) organization, and Beaufort County. We're here to work together to support the citizens of Beaufort in enjoying and this important treasure that we have here. I'm gonna briefly highlight these topics which are contained in my report going forward. First are History Center operations. As you know, the past few years, we've staffed the History Center with volunteers on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. We have recently expanded that to include Thursdays during the summer, and so we are open from one to four, Thursday, Friday, and, and Sunday, and ten to four on Saturdays as well. We have almost two thousand, one hundred, one thousand eight hundred and sixty-two volunteer hours that are associated with, with the Friends of Fort Fremont and particularly staffing the center. Last year, we had over six thousand visitors from forty-six states and thirteen foreign countries. Now, this is actually a twenty percent decline from the year before, and that was really due to some weather-related issues which impacted the mechanical systems. We couldn't get the doors opened, the Wi-Fi wouldn't work, and those kinds of things. Stephanie Najic has a big job, as you just saw, and she worked tirelessly to make sure that we could get back up and running, which we did eventually. So, I think we saw a decrease primarily because we weren't open. We do volunteer work, helping to clean up the grounds, do vegetation removal, clean up the batteries, and we had over three hundred and seventy-four volunteer hours just doing that kind of work. And this last year, it included twenty-eight, twenty-eight Air Force ROTC cadets from Beaufort High School, so we're involving the, the community in that work as well. We do educational outreach with a goal of reaching out to the children in the school. The Spanish-American War era is in the fifth and eighth grade social studies curricula, and we are working with teachers particularly in those grades to see if we can be an important part of their curriculum and their learning. We only had two school groups last year. We actually have a school-age group coming in just a couple of weeks, as a matter of fact, so we're looking forward to that. And our educational outreach team is building a traveling trunk that they'll, will be able to sort of bring Fort Fremont to the schools and work with the teachers doing that as well. Community outreach is an important part of what we do. Many of you were able to attend the Harvest Festival last November. We had over three hundred visitors come to the Harvest Festival. We do specific community groups as well, and you can see those listed here. We also are actively involved in celebrations in Beaufort County. Last year, we did the Memorial Day Parade, the Lands' End Fourth of July Parade, and the Christmas Parade. So, we want to be out there and be part of the community as much as we can. We have an active presence on social media with over two thousand followers, and we're, we're listed as one of the sites to see on St. Helena with TripAdvisor. We'd like to get that number higher. And we do some marketing as well. You can see some examples of the marketing, and we want to say a special thank you for the twelve thousand dollars we got from the ATAX that is really helping us with marketing. We're doing some paid advertising to get the word about Beaufort County and about Fort Fremont out there. We have worked hard to enhance the visitor experience at the fort. I think last year, I told you about some of the artifacts that we were able to acquire or to fabricate. We're currently working on a projectile around to breech load the round into the, into the gun, and that should be on display here soon. I think I mentioned last year, we have a project known as the Carl Project, named in honor of Carl Dorr. He and his wife owned the, the home that was the former hospital at Fort Fremont. Carl passed away, but Cecile Dorr is still active member of the Friends of Fort Fremont. This really has two components to it. The first is to take Gun Position One, and for those of you who have been to the fort, that's the one to the right, and to essentially recreate what it would have looked like when the fort was in operation. Now, to do that, we have to make sure that it's safe for visitors to go in there, and so we've commissioned an engineering study by Bennett Engineering, which we have paid for, and that study is close to being complete. The site visit has been complete, and we're waiting for the final report. That will tell us what it's gonna take to make portions underneath Gun Position One safe, and then we will raise the money to make that happen. Our intent is to take one of those rooms and recreate what was the plotting room at the fort where they actually calculated the fire commands, and we will recreate replicas of the artifacts so that visitors can see what that looked like. The second part of the Carl Project to enhance the visitor experience is to create a digital simulation of the construction and operation of Fort Fremont. And we have partnered with the Center for Digital History in the History Department at West Point. They create digital simulations of historic events, primarily historic battles. We have a group of cadets and faculty members who will be in Beaufort the first week in August to do that site visit. They'll then take the plans, what they've learned about the fort, go back to West Point, and they will use that information to send to a, a person who develops video games, who will then develop the video, the digital simulation of the construction and operation of the fort. Let me point out that on August third, mark your calendars, August third, those cadets and faculty members who are coming to Beaufort will have a panel discussion on what they are learning and what their project is. It will be at three o'clock at St. Mark's Episcopal Church on Eleventh Street in Port Royal, and it's open to the public. And so, if you want to get a chance to see West Point cadets in the wild, see them engaged in learning, they're actually getting academic credit for this project, and hear a little bit more about this exciting way in which we're trying to enhance the visitor's experience. That's August third, three o'clock at St. Mark's in Port Royal. And finally, to continue to tell the story of the Friends of Fort Fremont, we have a group of folks who are working on developing a book to tell the history of Fort Fremont. We've been in conversation with the University of South Carolina Press, and they're very interested in, in this piece, and our first drafts of our chapters are due on Friday. So, we'll, we'll have a sense for what's going on. But I, I have a feeling that this is really gonna be a very important contribution to the, not only the history of Fort Fremont, but the history of Beaufort and the entire period when America transitioned into a global power at the turn of the nineteenth to twentieth century. So, we value our partnership with the county. We value our partnership with our friends on St. Helena Island. I want to give a big shout-out to Dr. Adams and thank, and thank him for his kind words, and we work in very close partnership with the folks at Penn Center as well. In particular, shout-out to the Land Preservation Director Stephanie Najic, who is a great partner to work with. And subject to your questions, this concludes my brief presentation, and I hope if you haven't been, y'all come and see it.
Any question? Yes, yes.
So, Barney, thanks for that, and thank you for talking about enhancing the visitor experience, which is the essence of the state ATAX, so we're happy to hear that. My question has to do with, this came up at the ATAX meeting, the fact that we now have a county business use policy, and some motor coaches that were used, were coming to Fort Fremont no longer can?
Well, they actually can, but they have to pay a fee.
They have to pay, but has that impacted your visitors?
It has, it has impacted. We've, we've worked with several motor coach companies, and when we told them that that was the requirement, they have backed out, so we are not seeing that opportunity. And it's really, I think it's all up to you. It's a trade-off between how do we drive tourists, visitors to Beaufort on the one hand, and yet using public property for profit on the other hand, and I'll leave it to your judgment in terms of how.
That's why I brought it up, because it. That's why I brought it up, because it is having a negative effect with motor coach companies that don't want to pay. And I get, I mean, I don't, that's up to them, but I know Fort Fremont was specifically cited.
We would love to have them, absolutely. We would welcome any.
I'll leave it right there.
Yeah, okay, I will do, thank you. Any other questions?
Any other questions, comments? For sale, I appreciate everything y'all do. It's one of the best places to visit. And when I took the county manager around, we had an opportunity to go inside. But he had access because he had his own keys and stuff to get in, so.
Ooh, I have to get permission from Stephanie. Great. Well, thanks so much for your support, Mr. Chairman, too. It's great, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to all the red shirts that came.
And there's a double shout out for Wendy. Amazing woman. We're down to number ten. Number nine, I'm moving this thing too fast, huh? Okay, this is, I need a motion to approve, the approval to fund due diligence and negotiation terms of acquisition for the following proposed green space program application, the Sea Island Parkway tracks and the Chelsea tracks.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Now we'll, Mr. McShane, thank you, sir. I was looking for you back there, I couldn't see you, man.
Oh, yeah, he's there.
I was trying to hide, sir. Well, good afternoon. If I may, sir, just for a moment, a personal indulgence on the conversation that was held earlier about the Cotton Hall track?
Yes.
I will just publicly, I'll offer once again, in my other capabilities, I'm happy to help facilitate and maybe even help expedite that timeframe. As an example, I was part of the process to write the general permit for the Army Corps of Engineers on that, on managed title impoundments. I realize that the county is contracted with a well-respected land manager, but there are times when, for instance, the ACE Basin Task Force could write a letter of support that'll bring some visibility that will help. So it's simply an offer. Whether the staff wants to accept it or not will be their choice. The other thing that I can certainly help facilitate is I believe there's some additional dollars that could be sought after for some of the water control structures that you were told about.
Please do.
I own sixty-six of them, so I'm quite familiar with how long they last and how complicated they can be. And I'm just right up the road, so I'm happy to even, and then in my, as Madam Chairman knows, my role as Senior Leader of Ducks Unlimited, we're the wetlands, we're the nation's largest wetlands conservation organization, can bring some expertise that might be of some assistance as well. Because there is a challenge on the shallowness of those impoundments, which comes from many years of not having them managed properly. But you can actually enhance some of the strategic objective of saltwater fishing in that area. So if the Assistant County Administrator would like for some help on that, I'm happy to help do so on that.
Appreciate the invitation.
Okay. Well, today, we're here in my capacity as Chairman of your Green Space Advisory Committee. And Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask on the amendment, on the motion, if we could take each project separately and then come back to the motion?
We will, right now, for discussion, but we'll do just what you just asked. Thank you.
Thank you. The first track is on Ladies Island. And is there going to be a map and aerial presented? Okay. Thank you. And I think this was also distributed earlier, but this is the track that's on Ladies Island, I'll see you on Parkway, and it's next to the Ladies Island Middle School. I think, Mr. Bartholomew, I know you're quite familiar with it. It's kind of interesting here. This is, under your ordinance, you allowed a landowner to come directly to green space. So this is not that it necessarily came in a recommendation of a classic conservation organization. This came directly by a representative of the landowner. And your Green Space Committee, in its discussions with the school right next door, and actually, the school having ownership of the land that surrounds this, is that we invited the school board to have a discussion with us. And I think Chairman Guyer, I believe I'm saying that, Colonel Guyer, would agree to this. There was hesitancy on their part in the beginning. I think they thought that we were coming to them for them to take that project on. And then I think when the lights went off, when we said, no, for the uses that we could apply green space for, this would complement what you're already trying to do at the school, and we would be the funder of it. You would just end up being potentially the owner. So whether it's the county or the school board to be the owner sort of, is frankly a decision the council will make at some point. But we could see how this could enhance, particularly at the middle school age level, having this ability to have an, as in, outdoor laboratory. And I think this is, the synergy of this has become very effective now that they are excited. And in our recent Green Space Committee, not only did Colonel Guyer can, but he brought several members of the school board. And there was enthusiasm in this recommendation that we ask for the approval for the due diligence up to the cost that staff is estimated to be to move forward with the idea that this would then come back. Most likely, so sort of long-term, would be either owned by the school board directly or the county with an agreement with the school, so they can use this property in that light. Any other questions, Mr. Chairman?
Any other question for Mr. McShane? Yes, go ahead.
Not a question, just a thank you. There's a lot of work going into it, and I want to thank the school board and the county. I think that's a prime example of how this program is supposed to work and getting that individual equity to come forward. It's going to be a great beneficial project, both ladies and gentlemen.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's tremendous natural resource values on its own, but the fact that it's complemented with the fact that the school, the middle school, and if I were in the ability to say, when is an important time to teach young people about the value of natural resources that is that middle school? So this is really, the synergy of this, I think, is really a template that I'd like to see replicated elsewhere.
Any other questions?
Since I'm the maker of the motion, I will amend the motion to separate these and have us move forward with the Sea Island Parkway track.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, the motion is seconded. Any further discussion on this matter? Oh, everybody ready? Those in favor, please indicate by raising their hand. Okay, it's unanimous, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Passamut, for doing that, because that will help actually qualify some discussion that we could have now on the remaining track, which is known as Chelsea. And I think most people are, have become very familiar with some of the publicity that's taken towards it. I'm joined today just to highlight a few people who have been big players on this. David Bishop's with the Nature Conservancy. I want you to think about a private organization negotiated with a willing landowner on a $34 million value for $32 million, and they borrowed 28 million. Borrowed 28 million to do this. But I hope that everyone in this room will come to appreciate that how Chelsea goes, everything around it, ergo, will go next. And the fact that this could have easily been annexed into the town original land and have, in my view, a very nefarious zoning aspect to Beaufort County, even though it's technically in Jasper County, but on the line, to have that impact at where 462 and 170 intersect, which is already under great pressure, not to add one more unit there. And so I've come before you today with a request from the Green Space Committee to do something unique. I'm going to ask for due diligence approval, which in a project outside the county doesn't have a fiscal impact, meaning we don't pay for the survey's appraisal. But I'm going to ask that we invoke a new tool. And the irony of being here today is immense, because Cotton Hall is exactly what the state did for Beaufort County. We made a reimbursable grant, so the county could capture that property before you lost it. And then as you went through your process, reimbursed the state a portion of what the state put in. I'm going to ask you to think about a reimbursable grant. Your purpose of this whole program was to accelerate conservation in this part of the world. Think about what the pressures have occurred just simply since the referendum passed in 2022. Think about what land values have done since the referendum passed. They did not go down. Other markets have had, but land values did not go down. The communities of both Jasper and Beaufort County were as diligent on this prospect of being annexed in the original as much as any project across the state. They saw what it would do to their community with the potential of that being annexed and have a zoning change. That is why the Nature Conservancy, because they had confidence in two things that occurred, the state of South Carolina's commitment and Beaufort County willing to put money outside its own account. And you did that once before on Gregory, which is just right upriver from. And when you think about the impacts of Chelsea, what it could have here on, and if I'm not mistaken, and I believe the, I have to look like I do for my daughters just a minute. Did I do something wrong? When you think about seven miles just on Hazard Creek, two and a half miles along Snake Road, and over a mile on 462 itself, what those impacts could be. And then think about what it would do when you come down to 462 and 170 in Beaufort County. You would be the structure for what you would be, you would be the infrastructure for that development there. You're also going to be protecting over a mile of the water canal that Beaufort Jasper Water Sewer Authority manages. So we're talking about a quality aspect. There's no question, the science is clear, that development has an impact on water quality around, particularly where you get your drinking water, on that. So this is an opportunity for the county to go one more step. Open Land Trust will hold an easement on this property, because the Nature Conservancy is now the owner of that. Just like they did at Gregory. There's an application in for the state, though. There'll be an application going to Jasper County. Jasper County is putting their, what they voted on recently, their program together. Their ordinance timeframe, case is.
They're passing it to council and hoping to take their first application to the law.
And they're going to bond their, they're going to bond their money. So they'll have some cash coming up. But meanwhile, we have a private entity who's willing to go out and put 28 million dollars, borrow 28 million dollars on the market. The Department of Defense is so interested in this, they're going to put money into this, just like they did Gregory. They're willing to pay up to 50% of the conservation easement value of this property. That's estimated, but the conservation easement value is around 12 million. I'm giving these numbers because this is going to come together here. 12 million, which means Department of Defense will look at putting 6 million. The state, Beaufort County, and Jasper County each will do 2 million. You get to 12 million. Then you have permanent certainty on what could happen there, and most likely, that will then reflect what other land uses become beyond that. Tecton Hall, Bullen Hall, et cetera, all up and down 462. So, Mr. Chairman, Madam Chairman, I'm asking for this committee to recommend to its council to not only approve the due diligence as we normally would, I'm asking you to solicit council's approval to make a reimbursable grant to the nature, to open space, excuse me, to open land trust as the applicant, to take 6 million, which is the Mount DOD, high confidence, low risk money that will come by. It's going to be about an eight to 12-month process. So it would be an eight to 12-month time cycle to get that money reimbursed. I would, I submit that the little bit of interest that you would lose during that 12 months is far less than what the cost would be to the county to lose this deal. So this would be unique, asking council to approve the due diligence, but a reimbursable grant of 6 million to help reduce the debt load. When the Nature Conservancy is holding 28 billion dollars worth of debt, and we have other projects that we all know about coming through, we need to help them. This brings confidence, this brings, where conservation groups are willing to put capital out there, minimizing the risk, there's, I can't say there's no risk, but minimal risk here. The Department of Defense has made this a priority. Mary Ryan, would you introduce yourself just for the rest?
Yes, hi, I'm Mary Ann, I work for the Mariposa Station.
Has made this a priority. This money is in DOD, and I think there's, even though we know there's lots of discussion going on, I've been in DC even last week, of where grants have been held, et cetera, or grants have been being eliminated. This is not going to be the case in DOD on this. This is too important. You can see the proximity to the air station just from where this property is. You have the resources. Yes, we're going to lose a little bit of interest if we do that. But I go back to my point, the interest that you lose is minimal compared to what the cost would be to lose this transaction. And build confidence in a group like the Nature Conservancy or others to go out like that and do something. This means that there's timeliness, that this was better valued today than it will be a year from now or two years from now. And if we can help them do that, I feel that they will be there to help us when we need help. And we would, this will not be the last one. So it is a modification that I'm asking for on the motion.
I have a comment for this motion.
Yeah, we put this motion on the floor.
Well, we're under discussion for some reason.
We have, well, we've separated the two.
We separated the two, so we're just going to put the motion on the floor, and we can go from there with the amendments and et cetera, et cetera.
So you want the motion for the reimbursable grant?
I'd like to make that motion, please.
Yes, I'm recognizing this, yes.
A reimbursable grant, plus the due diligence.
Plus our standard due diligence for a project outside Beaufort County.
Okay. Anybody want to second that?
I'll second it.
Okay. Okay, now we're in a discussion, Bobby. You have anything you want to get more kept aside?
Given that amendment, this will have to be forwarded to council for a council decision.
Yes.
Ms. Howard, you want us, or you want us?
No, I just want to make sure it's all clear on, on sort of the path, though. So what's on the agenda today is the due diligence. What we're doing, I'm asking, is we're adding this to the due diligence for staff to go back and work to facilitate a reimbursable grant, so that we can bring that forward to council.
That's a much better plan.
Yeah, because we don't, none of the details of that have been worked.
So if that's the direction that we're getting, perfect. I just wanted to make sure that.
That's your motion, Ms. Howard?
That's my motion, that's all the intent.
Just second this?
Yeah, that's the right.
Okay, that's the intent.
And to give some confidence to your staff, I've asked, I've directed the Director of the State Conservation Bank to facilitate the motion, how we do it at the state level and have done that reimbursable grant, so they can now come in and go.
Okay, any further?
So I have a comment for Mr. McShane. So this ties right into what Soloco has talked about the last time, Southern Low Country Regional Board. The mayor, the municipalities have talked about, we need to use green space to put, you know, things under conservation now, because they're only going to be more expensive in the future. And so the mayor. And so the mayors of the municipalities and the county, we have talked about taking a five-year, 10-year block and getting things taken care of now because it's only going to be more expensive. So this is one perfect example of that. And it feeds into what we've all talked about with the municipalities and the county. So I think it's, it's fine to go ahead and reimburse the Open Land Trust the 6 million.
So to be clear, you'll be offering a grant, you will pay out the 6 million.
Right.
That'll reduce the debt that your partners are collaborating on by that amount, which is not insignificant at today's rates.
And it will get reimbursed later.
It will. And it's the 10 to 12 month cross 10 to 12 month.
Yes.
And that was the experience we had on Gregory Neck. We just got ahead of ourselves on Gregory Neck a little bit because the work was being done as we built this program.
Ms. Brown.
Um, I think the answer to the question says the amount of money that the county's putting, um, 6 million rates?
Eight.
It'd be total paid.
Okay, okay. And then we'll give the 6 million back?
Yes, ma'am.
How do we get that back?
Because that'll come from the Department of Defense, which is a partner in this whole project. It's just that you're helping minimize the amount of debt that the applicant and the partners have put in. Yep. You, any other comments, questions?
Um, and just to reiterate for the public, we think Jasper County will do 2 million.
That's the applications that will be going in and is it or not, is it or not? They're still working on it.
No, their sales tax committee passed an ordinance recommendation to their county council. So once their county council passes the ordinance.
But it would be at least at the 2 million.
But yes, okay.
Which the application for the state bank has.
Uh, in July reimbursement.
And then the state bank will take a vote on that in September. It'll be at least. And then your due diligence will come back for the green space grant, permanent grant of 2 million.
Just one thing I want to say. First of all, thank you for your efforts. I believe from what I'm hearing.
You're going to set the bar pretty high for other counties to follow, which we, as Beaufort, look forward to. I mean, that, this is big time. Okay.
The rest is sort of, they'll have Saturday's end. You have Saturday's end already.
I like that. I think this, this new nuance to it.
I don't believe, and I think David, you affirm this, I'm not aware of any other county, frankly, and not just in the state, but in the region, and certainly not nationally, who's put that kind of money into a neighboring county.
Absolutely, absolutely. Good. Well, we appreciate your efforts.
Um, before we take a motion, Ms. Mary Ryan, do you care to comment?
Um, I just want to express our support.
Please, 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 please come forward.
I think most of our recent time supporting this project has, has already been said in, in terms of shared resources of the community as well as it is directly under our low-lying airspace. So it will provide a buffer for operations.
Uh-huh, oh.
Preserve our military community partnerships.
I have one question. Which FY year would those dollars come from?
But it's a great question because I think that leads to the high confidence that we bring. We would only bring these, I think, when we have high confidence. As I said, I can't say zero, but minimal.
Okay, um, we calling for the question, um, could we?
Just to be clear.
Yes.
You're approving the due diligence.
Yes.
And you're directing staff to bring, along with the due diligence when they're done with that, this grant resolution documentation.
Yes.
Understood.
It would come back to this committee and then go to council.
Understood.
That's, that's, that's the motion.
Oh, it's coming back here?
I would prefer, because of your schedule, sir, if it can come directly to council on schedule.
Yes, yeah.
Do it, do it. Makes sense. That makes sense.
Because you don't need again until when?
September 2nd.
It's going to council this recommendation.
Your due diligence, because there's no cost, does not have to go to council. All that has to go to council is this grant. Yes. Just, if you, you can go directly to council if you choose to. You just haven't seen the documentation or terms or anything else. Uh, so if you want to review that and scrutinize that at the committee level, it would come back to here. You could have a special meeting before that council meeting, or you go straight to council. It's your choice. But typically, it comes back to the committee.
Um, let's look at the schedule coming up because we will not meet as the natural resource committee until September. Yeah.
Send it straight to council.
Yeah, I agree.
The staff, this, this committee has recommended it go straight to council.
And they can, you can make a motion to do that and then vote on that, and then that can happen.
Uh, you want to amend the motion to have it go straight to?
I'll amend my motion that it goes straight to council.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion to, to have the.
Grant reimbursement.
Reimbursement go directly to council for approval. Any questions on that? Those in favor of that, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, it's unanimous. Now, the motion as amended, which would include going straight to council at this time for the reimbursable. Those in favor of that motion as amended, please indicate.
And approving the due diligence.
You're approving the due diligence.
And the due diligence, yes.
Sending it to council all at once.
Yes, that's, that's the motion that we're working on. And, um, those in favor of that motion, please indicate by raising your hand. It is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. McShane. You, you challenge us every time you come. Appreciate that, David. Yeah.
If I may, can I remind the committee that you have three expiring seats on the green space effective June 30th. So at your, which you can take up at your next meeting is appointments to that. The geography seat, which is sort of the.
Oh, yeah, three seats.
Your county council delegate designate, and your delegation designate. Mr. McGrath, McGrath, currently serving in that role, and then of course Senator Davis.
Right. Okay, thank you. Got this here. Okay, all right. Um, now we down to number 10 now. I was trying to get to number 10 long time ago. Yes, sir.
Quick, just a technical update. We've got some Wi-Fi interference on our microphones. So if you could, the little.
Button to the right on your microphones. They keep trying to shut themselves off to reset for the interference. So long story short, if you hit that little.
Just turn everything off.
Yeah, that one right there. If they cut back off, just hit that button. Sorry about the.
Okay. Footback, yeah. Hers isn't.
Why is that coming back on?
No, hit the right, on the right.
No. It doesn't work. It's not working. It doesn't work at all. Sorry.
You've got her shut down.
Not for long.
Okay. Yeah, well, we can move the agenda. Uh, the chair will entertain on number 10, an ordinance amending the zoning map for 11 acres located on Burnt Church Road, from T3 to a Hamlet neighborhood and T4, Hamlet Center, to a T3 neighborhood. Did I say that right?
Yes.
Okay, um, so.
I will make that motion.
Okay, Mr. Pastor. It's been seconded. Now we down to discussion. So, Rob, you there?
Okay.
You got it.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Members of the committee. So what we are looking at today is a proposed zoning map amendment for 11 acres. It sits on the east side of Burnt Church Road at the corner of Almer Road and Burnt Church Road, and it's made up of three parcels. Uh, currently, two mobile home parks are located on that site. And the property is split zoned. So the front portion that fronts along Burnt Church Road is zone T4 Hamlet Center. And the rear portion of the property, I mean, if you take the whole 11 acres, is zone T3 neighbor, or T3 Hamlet neighborhood, as you could see on the, the map at the top. So the applicant, they originally came to an SRT meeting, a staff review team meeting, to look at developing this property into a single-family subdivision. And they were concerned about the split zoning because it puts two different sets of standards across the property. And in addition, if you look at the, the map carefully, the, the zoning boundary does not follow the current parcel boundaries. Um, they followed a former parcel boundary that was done away with, but the zoning lines don't move. So it created a, I guess, a doubly awkward situation for the applicant. So what they're proposing to do is to choose the, basically split the difference. So in between those two districts, the T4 Hamlet Neighborhood Center, that's on the front on Burnt Church Road, and T3 Hamlet Neighborhood, in the middle, there's a district called T3 Neighborhood. And it's, I would say it's a good halfway point between those two districts. And what they're proposing to do is to rezone the entire property, that T3 Neighborhood. In a way, what you're doing is downzoning the front portion and upzoning the rear portion. It is their intent, and they've provided in the application, to build a 50-lot subdivision with lots averaging about 150 feet by 100 feet. So you could see that in the proposed. However, this is simply a straightforward map amendment that that was provided as an informational item to show the, what they intended to do with the property. When we're looking at the impact of this development, it's really, there are approximately 40 mobile homes in the two mobile home parks, and I'm not certain exactly how many are occupied. But when you look at the difference of what is there currently and what is being proposed, it's, it's very similar. However, it's also important to note that the applicant, even without this rezoning, they could develop higher density along the front and do multifamily, and then develop single family at the, at the rear portion, or even duplexes. So it's not that the property is not developable, but it's their intent in doing a single-family subdivision is facilitated by making the zoning map amendment. You know, as far as staff, you know, this did not trigger a traffic impact analysis because we go by the difference between the existing zoning and the proposed zoning. If it triggers more than 50 peak hour trips, that triggers a TIA, and this, in this case, it did not. And the property is currently served by sewer and water. Staff, as far as staff recommendations, staff recommends approval. Um, the property is split zoned along current property lines. The current zoning does not allow for consistent development across the properties. And the rezoning is an upzoning of six acres, downzoning of five. So, you know, staff made that recommendation to the planning commission. At their April 7th meeting, the planning commission voted to recommend approval. It was a five to two vote. And I will say in the discussion, one of the concerns was that this would result, if they developed the property, into displacement of the people who live in the, the mobile home park. And so that is a consideration. They could develop the property with the current zoning. However, you know, this particular action may facilitate the development quicker. So that's something that it's important for this committee to know in making its recommendation. With that, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any question for, yes, Ms.?
What is a non-conforming mobile home park?
Well, the, the, so, mobile home parks are permitted, but not in all districts. So the two districts where these mobile home parks are currently, you know, where they're located, don't permit mobile home parks. So they're put in a position where they can't really expand beyond a certain percentage, and so.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Brown.
It was my understanding that the zoning's changed because they need to match, right? Like the T R, I'm sorry, T4HC, T3HN, it needs to be, it's changed T3N to T3N to so it matches.
Yes.
So there's not all this other zoning up. Is that right?
Yes, they're, they want to do a consistent development across the property.
What you have is a, a downzoning in certain parcel and then an upzoning in the other, is, is what I'm hearing.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's choosing, there's a district that's in between those two, and that's what they're choosing.
Yeah. Any, any other questions, comments, or concern? My, I, my only concern, not knowing, and this is a recommendation going before council anyway, so not knowing displacement at this time. I don't, you know, when you start looking at homes and you have, even though it's a mobile home park, it seems like they are developing continuously smaller lots to be able to service 50 units there. I mean, they're going to be less than 1,000, 10,000 square feet per lot. And, and so that displacement of those families, I don't know how many families that, that will be displaced. What's going to happen to them in a time where you have availability of homes not there? So, you know, that's my only concern right now. You know, so it has nothing to do with what's being proposed at this time, but I am concerned about displacing those families. And I don't know whether it is school, schoolchildren, or elderly, or what, but somebody is staying there at those mobile homes and stuff. And it'd be good to know that number before council meetings, that's possible.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can verify that. I mean, just by looking at the map and the addresses, that's where we came up, I counted 39. But that's not a, yeah, that's there now. There may be more than that because it's.
That, that will have to be, they have to find someplace to stay.
Well, I mean, if that's, if the property owner sells it and they want to redevelop, then yes, that would be a consequence.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Just one question. Whose district is this in?
Mark Lawson's.
This is Mark.
Right in the head of mine.
Mark Lawson, has he had any input? Has he met with these people? Does he know these families that are going to be displaced? What I'm saying, is that feedback you have at all now or not?
We don't have that, any feedback on that.
Rob, um, excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, no.
I didn't think there's, you're saying 39 homes back there? I have to go back down that road because I thought there were like four or five.
Well, there's, it's, it's several rows of mobile homes deep. So there's, if you look at the map, the, the front portion, there's a mobile home park there, and then there's one in the back that comes off of, is that Devonwood? Or comes off of Almer Road, I believe.
Okay, so I wasn't aware of that. Thank you.
I have one more question.
Go ahead, yes, ma'am.
Are these, do you know if these mobile homes are owned by the owner or are they rental mobile homes?
It's rental.
It's all rental.
These are two mobile home parks.
All rental, okay.
By the owner or the proposed owner? That's all right. We'll talk about that later.
Yeah, I mean, I would assume it is by the person who's selling the property, or they've sold it. But that, I don't have that information.
Okay, any other question for Mr. Merchant? The motion is on the floor is to, um.
We have to.
Go ahead.
Yes, I have the motion.
Go ahead.
Okay, and I'm going to move that we recommend to council that we grant the request for rezoning for the following reasons. One, it is consistent with the goals and policies of the Comprehensive Code and the purposes of the Development Code. Two, it is not in conflict with provisions of the Development Code or our Code of Ordinance. Three, it does, it does not, it does not, it does. It does not address a demonstrated community need. It is not required by change conditions. It is compatible with existing and proposed use of land surrounding. It would not adversely affect nearby land. It would result in logical and orderly development patterns. It would not result in adverse impact on the natural environment, and it would result in development that is adequately served by the public facilities.
Okay, that's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Mrs. Howard has seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Okay, um, those in favor of the motion that's set before us, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, those opposed?
I'm going to say no at this time until we get the feedback from Mr. Lawson and.
I'm gonna say no at this time until we get the feedback from Mr. Lawson and hear from the people. I know this will go forward, so I'm not worried about that.
So you're voting against it?
I'm gonna vote against it.
And one abstention, I'm abstaining right now. So it passes. Okay.
Go on to council.
To go on to council, yes.
Okay.
We're at number 11, and I'll take a motion to amend the zoning map for 86.56 acres located at 98 Jennings Road, from TR, TR, T2R, to T3 Hamlet Neighborhood, and TRHN, Hamlet Neighborhood, and TR, T4 Hamlet Center, utilizing the Hamlet Place Type Overlay District.
I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
There's been a motion and second. Mr. Merchant, you own.
Okay.
Again.
All right, so I think some of, most of you are familiar with this rezoning because they came about a year ago with a different type of rezoning. At that time, what they were proposing to do, and I guess I'll back up a little bit, this property is loc, it's 86 acres located at 98 Jennings Road. So this sits in the Burton area, basically across the street from Battery Creek High School. And the current zoning of the property is T2 Rural, so it's that green there. And what they're proposing to do is to use the place type overlay, which is a provision in our code. That allows them, something that would be offered in an area of the county. That is identified as a location of a place type, an area where they're, it's recommending a higher-density, walkable neighborhood in our comprehensive plan, then they have the opportunity to do a place type overlay. And what that means is that there is a, it's a little more detailed than a standard rezoning, where the applicant basically plans the neighborhoods, lays out the streets, and then chooses zoning districts based on our transect zones. And in that section of our code that deals with the place type overlay, there is a prescription or percentage of different districts that are appropriate for the type of place that they're proposing. So they have chosen to use the Hamlet Place Type Provision this time. So this, the last time that they came through, which was about a year ago, they were proposing to change the zoning from T2 Rural to C3 Neighborhood Mixed Use. One of the comments that we made at the staff level, and also from the planning commission, was that the comprehensive plan identifies this as a place type, and so we're recommending that they use that. So this went to first reading of county council, was voted, you know, was not passed at that point. And so I believe this was June of 2024. So the applicant has now come back to utilize the place type overlay. So our ordinance does say that if council votes something down, that the applicant can't come back for a year with an identical proposal. But it's staff, we believe that this is a different proposal that is being brought forward because they use that place type overlay. So what this would result in is the zoning that is closest to Battery Creek High School along Jennings Roads, they're proposing a T4 Hamlet Center, the balance of the property would be T3 Hamlet Neighborhoods. And as you could see in the packets, corresponding with that, they've submitted a thoroughfare plan, which shows the street network. And what the applicant is proposing to do is, in the T4 Hamlet Center, to develop townhouses and higher-density or smaller-lot, single-family, with the balance of the development, T3 Hamlet Neighborhood being single-family dwellings. So it's kind of a combination of different intensities of development, and that's actually something that the place type overlay district is meant to facilitate. It is, you know, also with that, it facilitates a pedestrian-friendly development, so that the higher-density lots, you know, would be addressing the street with sidewalks and that type of thing. So it's kind of a step up from more of a conventional subdivision. So that is what is being brought before council at this point. One of the things I wanted to discuss, and also our transportation, our traffic engineer, Kevin Sullivan is here, or, I'm sorry, transportation planner is here, Kevin Sullivan, in, you know, to address the TIA. But this was brought up at a public comment, and I think that this is important for council to understand, and it's that there is a lot of development that is coming in this area. And so that is something that our Traffic Impact Analysis Ordinance is designed to address. There is, in my counting, just looking at development in the city, and also in unincorporated Beaufort County, there's over 2,300 multifamily and townhouses, I would say, within a one-mile radius of that intersection between Paris Island Gateway and 170. So there's a lot of development coming in that area. I think if, most of you, if you've been driven from the southern part of the county, you would see the multifamily that's over by the Copeland Funeral Home, that area. So a lot of it is over in that portion. There are about 1,000 multifamily units being proposed along Broad River Boulevards, and that is closer to this particular development. So that's something to keep in mind as well, that there is a, you know, kind of a collective increase in development in this area. And so with that, I wanted to, Kevin, did you want to talk a little bit about the traffic impact analysis? Yeah, okay.
Hey, Mr. Sullivan?
Yes. So like, like Rob was mentioning, the TIA has been done, it's completed. It looks at a barrage of different things, so that we can properly analyze what's going on at the land use level, but also at the trip generation level. But one of those things are approved developments. So, you know, in a typical TIA, we have to make sure we look at what's going on today, which is existing conditions. If nothing would happen, and then we look at approved developments, and then we, on top of all of that, then we put the actual site trip generations on that as well. So, you know, just to, you know, to go over what Rob was saying, there is anticipation, or better yet, an appetite for more development in the particular area. Of course, this TIA looked at some critical intersections. You guys, you know, probably heard the speech before, the level of services at a couple of them were concerning. But we have recommendations in the TIA with respect to a collective parsing out of the cost to actually fund one of those actual traffic mitigation improvement recommendations.
Okay, any question for Mr. Sullivan?
I, well, I think they're gonna be for Rob.
Go ahead, he's not, he's not going anywhere.
I've got a question.
Oh, oh, oh.
Mr. Sullivan, was that the initial meetings when they did their first round, back in June, I guess, a year ago?
That was, that was this year, if I'm not mistaken. The TIA that I'm talking about is this year.
So this is the second TIA they've done, correct? And I, I appreciate that they took, took it and did it again, I guess is the right words. And this is the final draft? Will there be a final TIA, or are they waiting on comments?
This is the final draft.
It's, it gives us a lot more information than the first one did. All right, thank you, that's my only comment.
Before you leave, Mr. Sullivan, you meant, for him?
Yes.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
I have one, my last question was about the TIA. I have a constituent that wanted me to ask this question. Question, is the TIA only required when there is a zoning change?
No, no, there's multiple reasons.
Okay. Example, 15 acres open, if you have 15 acres and you want to open a small store, would that be allowed in a zoning if the store generates more traffic than their houses?
The ordinance is based off of the trip generation, so we will go through the ITE trip generation and see how much trips it generate. I'm pretty sure...
The store would?
But it actually depends on the square footage of it, too. So that's like the metric that we would use in order to determine how many trips it would create.
Okay, so what they would have to do with TIA for this, if they wanted like a store on the property? Okay, yes, okay.
You know, they didn't go over...
Can I help you out?
Oh, sure, go ahead.
No, he answered my question.
Okay, well, I just wanted to point out that when we get into hypotheticals, it really depends on the underlying zoning and what the by rights are. There are so many variables when you get into hypotheticals that it's hard to say yes or no, that something would be required. So if there's a specific lot that you want to, want for staff to address, we'll be happy to work the numbers all the way through on that. If not, whatever the parameters, we can work through any hypothetical scenario you want us to.
Would you answer the stuff about that ordinance, or would that be Rob?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Is that okay, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yeah, I wanted to ask Mr. Sullivan a question, but I can ask Rob the same question. Go ahead. Yeah, either one, go ahead.
Okay.
No, go ahead and answer a question.
Are you sure, because I have a lot of questions?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, you sure, okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the ordinance, on third paragraph down, I think it says, states that the Beaufort County Comprehensive Plan encourages high-quality development in walkable urban nodes as opposed to low-density sprawl, and designates the site as a location to implement a Hamlet Place Type and, what goes on the next one? So my question is, what is a low-density, what is low-density sprawl? What is that?
So I think that the, it would be comparing a, if you simply had lower-density residential development over a large area, overall, the impacts could be greater on our roads because there are, this would be completely auto-oriented development, you know, so that's one of the concerns. And... It would also, if you have higher-density nodes, then that allows for preservation of open space in between those. And so it's, it's kind of choosing a model of development where you have, you know, kind of a walkable community, and then maybe open space, and then another walkable community.
Okay, so like a large piece of land and a few houses, is that what, just any sprawl? Is that, yes, okay.
You could have a...
That's all I need, I don't need, we don't need to go on details, okay. My second question is, number three, it says demonstrated community need, how is this determined? It does address a demonstrated community need, how is that determined?
Well, it's a very broad category. And so what we're basing this on, as far as, the applicant has indicated that they are interested in entering into a development agreement with council. And actually, that development agreement was submitted last week, and we're in the process of, we go through a checking for completeness. So I can't really speak to the specifics, but they have provided information to us about what types of provisions they would like to have in that development agreement. And so through that, they're proposing to offer workforce housing, up to 10 units, $2,500 down payment or closing credit assistance, and money toward rehab for existing structures in the area. These are things that, you know, I think that would be better questions asked to the applicant, or things that could be worked through if council decides to, you know, enter into that development agreement. But, so that's why we check that box, simply because the applicant has indicated that they're interested in providing affordable housing.
Any other questions, Ms. Brown?
Lawson's?
You want?
No, not this time.
Okay, any other question, Ms. Tavonick?
So I noticed the TIA and everything else, and it says the school district was notified, since it's near Battery Creek. Did they have any comment?
I don't believe we got any comments from the school district on this particular...
Okay, that means they're copacetic with it, then.
Yeah.
Well, you know, the applicant actually said that, that this...
Sorry about it through this, so...
Yeah.
Yeah.
And does the, do we hear from the developer, or not?
That's up to...
Do we have questions? I don't know.
Yeah, we, I mean, we'll let him, let staff finish, and then we'll hear from the developer, if the developer's here, yeah, so, but...
I just want to point out that Rob mentioned that they had submitted the development agreement, and sent that out to council. And I inquired of the applicant's attorney if he wanted to match them up, like we're doing with Pine Island, and they did not want to defer this from this here. So we'll just proceed on our normal course with this from here to council, and the development agreement will proceed on its normal course unless they ask us to hold up the first reading of council or second reading of this.
Okay, go ahead, any?
Yeah, I'll just summarize our recommendation, and then if, and then I'll, I can answer more questions. So we, basically, staff recommends approval under the conditions that the applicant work with county council through a development agreement, so conditioned upon that, in that process, we would need to ensure, and we're just recommending, as council considers a development agreement, that, you know, adequate affordable units are being offered, and at a cost attainable to neighboring residents in the, in the community. We have worked with the applicant, you know, so basically, they meet the comprehensive plan as far as the location of the site, it meets our future land use schools. In addition, they meet the requirements of the place type overlay. And they've submitted that draft development agreement. The last comment here about the alterations to standards allowed in the development agreement, this is something that we've been working with the developer on, and staff has been pretty adamant that with a development agreement, you can't alter standards, and that language is not in the current draft that I, that I have seen. So that's an issue, we're still making that statement, because that's something that it's important in moving forward about, if the development agreement does move forward. So staff recommended approval, or recommend approval. In addition, it's important to note that the planning commission reviewed this...
At their May fifth meeting, and at that time, they, a motion to recommend approval of the development failed, only two, four, and six, six opposed. And then later on in the meeting, they made a motion to recommend denial of the application based on review standards of one, four, five, and seven not being met, and that motion passed seven months. So, planning commission basically recommends denial.
I do have a question about that, if it's all came, Mr. Chairman. They said number one, one, four, five, seven. So I look at your document.
Yes.
Number one is consistent with and furthers the goal of all above. And your document says, yes, a rezoning of this property implementing a Hamlet PTO is the future land designation of the parcel. So that's different from the planning.
Yes.
Okay, four, no, it's not required, five, and then number seven, would result in a logical and orderly development pattern, and you say, yes, the regulating plan places a higher density along Jennings Road, which places it in close parts of Battery Creek. So you're recommending one and seven are appropriate?
Yes.
Okay, I just want, because I watched the video of it.
Yeah.
And then I looked at this, and they contradict.
Yes, so, I mean, we're, we recommend, provide a review to planning commission, and, you know, they make their own recommendation. and, you know, they, they make their own recommendations.
Okay, um, any other question for Mr. Merchant? The only concern I have right now, um, is, um, infrastructure, road, traffic impact. There are a lot of residents in that area already complaining about traffic, particularly the, um, opening and closing of schools and trying to get around and navigate those areas and stuff. And, um, so that's, that's the only concern I, I really have. Um, I did read the, um, comments that the developer used, made and stuff, and said that the school district is below capacity. I'd like to hear that from the school district, if we can ask the school district what kind of impact this development may have on them. Are, are those schools under-capacitated at this time? Okay, um, go ahead.
I, I, I don't want to put the school district on the spot, but can they speak to the capacity of Battery Creek High School and Broad River Elementary School? If they're under or over or...
So you're on the spot?
You are on the spot.
I'm on the spot.
Come on.
I'm Carol Fudgefield, Beaufort County School District. Um, so we have not been approached by the developer, so we have not provided any information. I would say at Battery Creek, this is off the top of my head. Our document is available online on our website, Facilities Master Plan, which outlines all those numbers. Off the top of my head, yes, Battery Creek is below capacity. Broad River is right about where we like it, in our target range. Robert Small's Leadership Academy, which is where part of those students, uh, you know, I'm not sure about the zone, for middle school, they would go to that. Um, there's that capacity, so, um, where are they going? They're coming, so, that's, that's... And, and we do own that road, so, you know, there, we are, we have some on that road. Again, we'd not...
Which road, Jennings Road? Okay.
Oh.
Again, we have been approached of...
Mr. Chairman, I have one more question. Rob Merchant.
For Mr. Merchant?
Yes, please.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Merchant, uh, Ms. Brown has one more, one more questions.
Okay, just so I'm clear, because I'm a little confused. Number three says, does not address a demonstrated community need. How does staff define a community need? On page forty-four. Does not address a demonstrated community need. So my question is, how does staff define a community need?
When you say does not address, what are you reading from?
Page forty-four, number three.
Forty-four, number three.
It's underlying, does not address...
We'll go back to page forty-two.
A demonstrated community need, I'm just wondering how you, how staff defines that.
Yeah.
That's not what I have, I have it does address the community need.
Yeah, I've got, Paul, look at...
Page forty-four, might look on the wrong thing.
Yes, you're looking at the wrong thing.
Page forty-two is staff's recommendations?
Page forty-nine has his recommendation.
Forty-two, oh, okay, I was looking at a rezoning request, okay, I apologize.
Oh, that's okay.
All right.
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine, yeah.
Okay, any, any other questions? Okay, uh, Mr. Merchant, appreciate you.
Ah, thank you.
Well, at this time, hear from the developers?
Yes.
Please, I mean, I don't know which one to call, so...
I'm looking at the wrong thing.
Did you have the quick presentation?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, it says...
Go ahead.
I'm Rob Merrick with Polty Homes.
Okay.
And, uh, and yes, we've, uh, we've been working on this diligently for, uh, for a good while now to make sure we bring a great product. She pulls up the presentation here. Um, well, good afternoon, and thank you all for the opportunity to present this zoning map amendment request for ninety-eight Jennings. This proposal represents more than change in zoning, is a thoughtful response to vision and responsibilities outlined in the twenty-forty Beaufort County Comprehensive Plan. As the county's guiding document, referred to as the playbook for shaping our future, the plan calls for intentional, inclusive, and sustainable growth. It holds both staff and leadership accountable for aligning decisions with the long-term well-being of our communities. This rezoning request embraces that vision. It introduces the ham, a hamlet place type overlay that supports walkable mixed-use development and directly addresses the county's stated need for workforce and missile, and missing middle housing. The housing's types that are increasingly vital for young professionals, military families, and longtime residents alike. The proposal is consistent with the future land use map, compatible with surrounding neighborhoods, and designed to preserve natural resources while enhancing connectivity and livability. It also includes commitments to affordable and reinvestment in the local community. What you're about to see is a comparison with the staff notes, narrative from us, and also in how we are aligned with the comprehensive plan. Number one, the consistency, no conflict identified, states compatible with the development code and adjacent zoning. As you can see right there, we are, um, in use with the comprehensive plan. This rezoning is, request is fully aligned with the twenty-forty Beaufort County that serves the county's strategic vision and policy framework for growth. The proposed hamlet place type overlay directly reflects the plan's call for walkable mixed-use communities and supports the future land use map designation for this parcel. The comprehensive plan is not merely aspirational, it's a guiding document. It requires that all departments and decision aligns with its goals, and this application does just that. By incorporating diverse housing types, civic space, and connectivity, the proposal embodies the plan's intent to create vibrant, inclusive, and sustainable communities. Number two, conflict with the development code ordinances, no conflict identified. This rezoning request does not conflict with provisions of the Community Development Code or the Code of Ordinances. In fact, it supports the plan's directive to align zoning decisions with the county's long-term vision. The comprehensive plan on page one thirty-seven emphasizes the need for coordination between staff, departments, elected officials, to ensure that the zoning and land use decisions reflect the goals of the plan. The proposed place type overlay is a tool specifically encouraged in the plan, as stated on page one sixty-three, to implement the walkable mixed-use development in appropriate areas. Number three, the demonstrated community need. This application addresses a clearly demonstrated community need for diverse and attainable housing options. The comprehensive plan identifies the... As on one fifty-four, one fifty-five. The proposed development includes a mix of housing types and a commitment to workforce housing, directly supporting the plan's call for eliminating barriers to affordability and expanding housing choices for military families, young professionals, and long-term residents. The required change by conditions, now that was just brought up. While not driven by a single event, this rezoning is proactive response to involving conditions of Beaufort County, namely population, growth, housing demand, and the need for more efficient land use. The comprehensive plan encourages adapting zone to meet these changes, as stated on page one fifty-four, and supports the redevelopment underutilized land to accommodate growth in sustainable and an inclusive manner. Importantly, the subject property is ideally located within minutes of major employment centers, public schools, shopping areas, and media facilities. The proximity makes this a strategic site for residential development that supports the county goals of reducing vehicle miles traveled, improving access to opportunity, and promoting equitable growth. The rezoning enables the county to respond to current and future housing needs in a location that is already well-integrated into the community fabric. If you see the map here, where it's located, within a fifteen, with under fifteen minutes, you can get to both military installations as well as, like you said, restaurants, housing. Within a five-minute radius, you're at your shopping centers from your new Beaufort Shopping Centers, the Walmart and grocery stores and restaurants. Number five, compatibility with surrounding uses. Compatible with nearby residential and school uses. The proposed zoning is compatible with surrounding land uses and zoning designations, including nearby residential neighborhoods and community facilities. The comprehensive plan supports this type of transition between rural and urban areas through the place type planning, ensuring that the new development complements the character and function of adjacent areas while enhancing the community cohesion. Number six, adverse, adverse effects on nearby lands. Traffic impact noted, mitigation planned. We were the first ones to be implemented into the new ordinance with the traffic study. So that traffic study was nine intersections that were studied and proposed by the county themselves. So under that, the proposed development is designated to minimize adverse impacts on nearby properties. The traffic impact analysis was reviewed and approved by county staff, as well as South Carolina DOT, concluded that the overall traffic impact of the proposed rezoning would be very minimal. While mitigation is recommended at one intersection, due to the other projects, the specific contribution from this project is not significant. Additionally, the development includes environmental safeguards such as stormwater management systems, open space preservation, and natural buffers, that these measures align with the comprehensive plan, emphasize on protecting natural systems, and managing growth responsibly. Number seven, logical and orderly development plan. Staff comments, yes, higher-density place near school and roads. The rezoning supports a logical and orderly development pattern by placing the higher density near the infrastructure, schools, and roadways. The comprehensive plan promotes this approach through an advocacy for walkable, connected neighborhoods, and a strategic use of the place type guide growth. The proposed layout reflects these principles and contributes to the cohesive community fabric. Number eight, adverse impacts on the natural environment, must comply with environmental standards. The development will comply with all county environmental regulations, include significant civic and natural resource protection areas. The comprehensive plan provide, the comprehensive plan prioritizes environmental stewardship and resilience, calling for the development that protects water quality, wetlands, and wildlife. This proposal meets or exceeds those expectations. And number nine, the adequate public facilities, agencies noted, no issues raised. The site is well-positioned to be served by existing public infrastructure, including roads, water, and sewer. The comprehensive plan supports development in this area where services can be officially, uh, efficient, um, efficiently extended or already exist. This ensures that growth is physical and responsible and sustainable. That is, we'll serve letters from Beaufort Jasper Water and Sewer. So, as demonstrated, this rezoning request has been carefully evaluated against all nine zoning map amendments review criteria, and has been shown to meet or exceed each one. It is consistent with the twenty-forty Beaufort County Comprehensive Plan, aligns with the future land use map, and supports the county's vision in sustainable, inclusive, and well-connected communities. The proposal introduces walkable mixed-use neighborhoods that addresses the county's urgent need for workforce and miss, missing middle housing, while preserving environmental integrity and minimizing traffic impacts as confirmed by the approved traffic impact analysis. It also includes a meaningful commitment to affordability, civic space, and reinvestment in the surrounding communities. We respectfully request your approval of this zoning map amendment so we may move forward with a partnership with the county to deliver a project that reflects the values, priorities, and long-term vision of Beaufort County. Thank you.
Any question?
I have a question for, um, Mr. Harbert. If we can attach conditions to moving it forward, such as the development agreement negotiations? Okay.
Okay, that should...
Question.
Okay, Mr. Pass, Mr. Brown.
Yes, I would ask that we move this forward to county council, that we grant the request for rezoning for the following reasons, with the condition that the development agreement does not alter the district standards and that an adequate number of affordable housing is offered as follows. One, it is consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive code and the purposes of the development code. Two, it is not in conflict with the provisions of the development code and/or our code of ordinance. Three, it does address this, uh, a demonstrated community need. Four, is debatable. My personal opinion is, it is required by the changed conditions as stated. Five, is compatible with existing and proposed use of land surrounding this land, would not adversely affect the nearby land, would result in logical and orderly development patterns, would not result in adverse impact on the natural environment, and would result in development that is adequately served by public facilities.
Is there a seconded motion?
I'll second it.
Oh, you're gonna second, go ahead.
You can have it.
Who wants it?
Tab, seconded.
It's fine.
Um, any further discussion?
I just want to say one thing, thank you for taking the time to put together for us to go through even before this tonight, thank you, thank you.
So, we approve this tonight, right? And then it goes to the next county council meeting? Or do we wait on the development agreement? I'm, I'm not clear on that.
It goes to the next county council meeting.
For approval, right?
Yeah, not next week, but in three weeks, it's going to go for the first three weeks.
Three weeks?
Unless we receive a request from the applicant to defer it and we go to the council.
Okay, all right, but we approve it to, to go on to county council?
Correct.
Yes, okay, thank you, Joe.
Two things, before it comes to county council, I'd like for the developer to get something in writing from the school district personally, I would like to see that. And also, um, as you, as you can see, Councilman Dawson is not here today. Uh, this is in his district, and by going to first reading, he, he will have a chance to, um, you know, make comments at that time, but I, I will, I will vote for it at the committee level.
Okay, any other discussion?
I have one other comment, and that is, I watched the planning commission, and I watched a previous one, one person spoke against this. So there is not a massive community outrage about this development. They didn't, people didn't come, they didn't talk about against it. And I know Mr. Dawson had several meetings, and there were a few people there, I mean, handfuls. So, I don't think there's community outrage over this one.
And just to be clear, you say one person spoke against it, you meant from the public?
One, oh, yeah, from the public, I'm sorry, yes.
Any, any other comments, questions? Um, I, I just have one comment and, 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 um, and concern. Um, you, you went from a hundred and eighty-four units the first time to two hundred and forty-four. And so you upzoning and you adding more units, um, on this site. That's a concern I have and stuff, but that's all right, yeah. Okay, um, any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion being taken by raising hand? Okay, those in opposition? I'm working with Gerald at the time, for Gerald, um, so he passes.
I think you can do that without practicing.
Yeah, that's right. Not allowed, okay.
Item number twelve. There's a motion, I need a motion, a resolution authorizing the county administrator to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Port Royal Sound Foundation for surface evaluation table station collaboration. And that's Stephanie, okay.
Need a motion?
Oh, yes.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, is the property motion the second, Stephanie, now is you, okay.
Um, okay, so, uh, I received a request from the Fort Royal Sound Foundation, um, to be a part of the collaboration with them on the installation of a long-range surface evaluation table station. Um, what this is, just to give you a little bit of the background, um, South Carolina Geological Survey, who's part of SBCNR, maintains an array of certain combination table stations along the southeast coast. Um, they do have identity stations and A-station, but they don't have any in the Fort Royal Sound one yet. And so in late twenty-twenty-four, the South East Coast, there's a lot of stations that are being, uh, being procured. Uh, it's a request for proposals for, um, for support to establish new, they're called SET stations, as we keep, uh, along the southeast coast. And so the Fort Royal Sound Foundation was awarding funding to establish fifteen of these in our area. So this request, um, has been vetted through not only the land transportation department, but also the planning department and the public works department, that there's stormwater... stormwater folks. So, there's multiple departments who are interested in collaborating with Fort Royal Sound Foundation for these stations. The goal, can you read it from there, Laura?
Thank you. Their document, the goal of this project is to measure and record the relative change in the elevation of salt marsh across the watershed, watershed, and it builds on a data collection set that has been established over the last twenty-plus years along the South Carolina coast. So, this data is gonna add to the global data set and be used by researchers in our state, in our country, around the world, on general understanding of how the marsh changes with sea level rise and marsh migration and, and those types of things. So, this has no funding. The, the county doesn't have to provide any funding. We're just collaborators at this, at this time. If there are any projects that do come forward from the monitoring and the data collection, then those will be brought forward as separate agreements. So, if the foundation needs anything additional monetarily, then that would be a completely separate, separate agreement. But this MOU and our collaboration does, um, meet with advancing priorities that we've identified in the Beaufort County's Comprehensive Plan through the Planning and Zoning Department.
Okay. Any questions, Stephanie?
And I think, I was gonna say, I think Courtney here is here from Fort Royal Sound Foundation, if you had any questions for them.
You want to address this?
Just thank you for considering it. I appreciate it.
No further question? Always in favor of the motion, um, authorizing the resolution, which the county administrator to work with the Port Royal Sound Foundation for surface elevation, favor of station collaboration? Can you indicate by raising a hand? Okay. We lose any members of council?
We have to go. They work full-time.
Yeah. We got one, two, um, the resolution to authorize the installation of streetlights at the Oyster Factory Park. Stephanie, that's you. Okay? I'm sorry. Motion?
I'll make the motion.
Yes. It's seconded?
I'll second.
Seconded. Okay. Good.
I'm up. Uh, this is also another request that recently came forward, but from the town of Bluffton, and Constance is here from their Capital Projects to answer any questions, if you have any. Um, this is pretty simple. Oyster Factory Park is a co-owned park between the town and the county, and the Open Land Trust has a conservation easement. Um, there are six, I believe, six streetlights that need to be installed, or that the town wants to install on the property in order to provide some safety and security for visitors who use the park at night, because it is open at night for various events and, obviously, with the, the boat launch and the, the boating traffic there. Um, so, as per our, uh, joint ownership agreement, in order to install or construct anything on this property, we need count, uh, the town of Bluffton needs council's approval as well. And so--
I think it's great they want to do this. I've been there, and it's a really nice part. So, I think it's a good decision.
Yeah. I agree.
Okay. No further question? Those in favor, please indicate by raising a hand. Okay. It is unanimous. Thank you. Uh, there's no further, no other further business. Uh, Mr. Moore, you have anything for us?
Mr. President.
Okay. Give me a jury.
Okay.
Thank you. What time is it?
Five twenty-eight. Were you able to get ahold of Fran?